Ms. Bourne?
Here.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Matroni?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy? Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Here.
Mr. Weber?
Here.
You ready, please, uh, do I mean to... I apologize. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great justice of God.
Minutes of council from November 2nd.
Yes, we actually have, uh, two meeting minutes approved here. We'll start with the, uh, city council meeting in itself. Everyone has received a copy. I have not heard anybody, nobody speaking up about any changes. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of city council meeting held on November 2nd, 2021, as written and spent with their reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
All right. We also had a copy of the meeting minutes of the committee, the whole meeting was held prior to that council meeting. If there is no objections, I will go ahead and, uh, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the city council committee, the whole, on November 2nd, as written and spent with their reading.
Second.
Roll, roll call.
Ms. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
No special reports, letters, communications, and citizens' concerns. Something other than the on the agenda item. Please state your name and address.
Uh, hi. Aaron Borts, 878 Elm Street. Um, we live, uh, across from Municipal Park. We're kind of like positioned right across the pool. Um, it's been a rough summer for us in terms of the level of activity going on at the park. Um, it, it's a range of things. There's a multitude of things from either, you know, cars or lawnmufflers trolling the streets continuously for hours on end to, um, a lot of nefarious activity going on at the basketball courts, um, things that I don't necessarily think should be going on at City Park. Um, I have multiple examples. I won't get into all of them tonight. I can tell you the latest example, however, is what really tipped the scales for us. Uh, one of the groups that's typically there who gives the younger kids a hard time, uh, my daughter was down there on last Wednesday night with her service dog and got into a bit of a, unfortunately, a conversation with them. She didn't solicit a conversation, but they did. And it ultimately ended up with, you know, a couple of high school kids and probably junior high kids chasing my 12-year-old daughter. And her dog threw the parking lot tool, threatening to shoot and kill the dog and kick the dog. Um, again, without getting into a bunch of specifics, we decided to walk the neighborhood on Sunday. And, you know, this is a small sampling of the people we talked to, but I guarantee you that every door we knocked on, everybody has a story of some things that are going on at Municipal Park. And we've lived there for 18 years. It's really just been about the last 12 to 14 months that it's kind of been getting bad. If I had to guess, I would say we probably called the police between my wife and I alone, probably eight to 12 times since the beginning of, like, the summer. And everybody we talked to on the street has called the police at some point in time. Um, and I'll just kind of leave everything at that. I think that the police have responded as they can. Um, but I think that we need to maybe escalate this a little bit and dig in deeper to see how we can squash the problem because, again, everybody I talked to, nobody feels safe sending their kids out of Municipal Park at all. Um, that's kind of the long and the short of it. Again, I can get as detailed as you want. I could cite as many examples, but I, I don't want to overstep.
Yeah, I think, I think what I would suggest, and, uh, first off, and, and, of course, I think I speak for everybody up here and say that we're, we're sad to hear that because, I mean, it is a, uh, certainly just a park, and we want it to be used by as many people as possible, but we also don't want it to be used in a way that is not safe for the residents to use. And so, um, what I would suggest is, um, have you spoken to Chief Jones?
Yeah. So if he was, I'm an exchange club member. He was in the other night. Um, we had some, some conversation about it. Um, we've talked to, I've talked to probably six of your police force just in various times when, when we go, when we have to call the cops and we go down there and we meet them there. Um, there was a kid running around with a taser one night. This isn't getting squashed. So it's, it's been going on since probably, like I said, May, when the weather started to break. Um, and it started with just the cars and the mufflers, and that was just annoying enough because you tried to sit on your deck in the summer and enjoy things. The, the activity and the, the level of people that are kind of infiltrating the park is very different from the people that are playing pickleball and tennis. There, there's an ancillary group that's, that's hanging out and causing problems. And we, we see kids vaping down there. I know they're not old enough to vape, you know, and I don't even know what's in the vape. And so we're, you know, again, with my wife and I and most of these people, we've lived on this street for, we've been there 18 years, and we've, we've got to stop this because I got people talking about wanting to move in, in what they consider their dream home.
Okay. Well, I think, uh, we can do anything tonight, but I know that the administration, uh, the law director and the administrator myself, we, we have a meeting tomorrow where we go over things that come up in council, and so we will, uh, certainly talk about this with the chief, and I would suspect that we, do we have your email on those other?
Uh, Pat, Patrick Doens, yes, he does. Just tell him, "Aaron Borts," he'll, he'll know.
Yeah, he'll know. Now, so we'll follow up with you. I think that that's certainly something we want to be mindful of, and we also want to make sure that that's not something that's something we get, something we get a handle on because I think you've identified the exact problem.
Yes.
Is you, if by inaction is leading to worse behavior or conduct. So...
And by no means am I throwing anybody under the bus in terms of saying, we called somebody, didn't do anything or anything like that. We're, we're here to be part of the solution.
Right. If you don't mind, I know we actually had this in the upcoming budget. We do have cameras set aside for Municipal Park as well. Do you know, I'm, I'm sure you probably don't know. I don't know if the administrator knows where exactly those cameras are and how often those will be monitored because we are including cameras in the budget for the park. So...
Well, they'll be 24-hour. I think that's one thing we've got to talk about, what exactly is the range of things because it sounds like some of the, some of the areas that need attention are not near, I would describe as the core function. So it's okay to have cameras, but it's, but they need to be able to see the conduct that we need to see. So that's something we're probably going to need to talk about.
And, you know, it's like you go a certain range and everybody, if it's in front of them, they see it. You go two or three houses this way and they're just like, "I don't know what you're talking about." So it, it's fairly localized in terms of that, which is potentially a good thing, but, you know, if we can focus on, literally to, to all of us, it's taken back our street, our park, because we feel like we've lost it.
Okay.
Really do.
Mr. Borts, I, something that I think that makes sense is if you had community policing and you had some police officers that might walk that beat, would be in that area and kind of control that neighborhood. I think that would make a lot of sense.
Yeah. I mean, just having the peasants, you know, or just park an empty car, police car there and let them think someone's walking around. I mean, do you really, any kind of deterrent you can come up with?
Right. We, we were a little aware of the situation, so we had talked about it in service. So we were already planning, like Jonathan Smith said, getting cameras for that park.
The administration, the administration's been working on it. So, so I think we'll follow up and we'll reach out back out to you as the point person for the group.
Please.
And, uh, we'll look at that.
Okay.
I appreciate you, I appreciate you bringing the concern and the, how you've done it. I appreciate that.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
I warn Aaron that if we don't leave now, we're going to be here for an hour and a half.
Yeah.
Age advice.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
All right. Well, uh, I have, uh, the ministry of reports. I have, uh, no report. Uh, this council want to pass a resolution during your...
Uh, we can do it during the president, it's up to you. If you're comfortable with the waiting for the president of council, it's fine. Just wait for the president of council. It's a council. Yes.
Administration certainly fully supports small business Saturday. Um, city MS, we here.
No report.
Finance director?
I have no report.
Law director?
No report.
Thank you. President of council?
Mayor, uh, with, uh, what the mayor mentioned under his report.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I do apologize. I do need to, uh, recommend.
Yes.
Uh, Mary Richter to be on the O A library, O A Public Library Board.
Uh, so with that, uh, as everyone was here for the appointment review committee that was initially passed, and I believe it was initially passed, the finance committee as well. Um, so I am going to make the motion to, uh, appoint, uh, Mary Richter to the O A Library Board.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
All right. I'd also like to introduce Resolution 65, 2021, um, and move the rules be suspended, allow for us reading by number and title only dispensed with the second and third reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 65, 2021, Small Business Saturday, November 27th, 2021, recognizing November 27th, 2021 as Small Business Saturday and supporting awareness of the value of our small businesses.
Okay. I'm moving that Resolution 65, 2021 be passed.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Yes. I would like to say that I think small business is very important to our community, and I'm glad that we support it. I think it's very important.
Roll call.
Ms. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Great. And then the, the final item under the president of council reports is the presentation of the water rate, that sewer rate study. So we've had this twice now at the Public Utilities Committee. Um, we have, uh, Michael Mecker here to go over the rate study with us and, uh, to bring this to council as a whole before we make a determination, which will probably not be happening until these meetings. So give us enough time to sit through, look it over, and make sure we're all comfortable with it. So hopefully, uh, Mr. Mecker is available. And there, there we go. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mecker.
Good evening. Uh, just thank you. So I have a brief presentation. For those of you on the Public Utilities Committee, a lot of this should look familiar. For those not, feel free to stop, move questions along the way. I'm going to attempt to share my screen. I think you need to enable screen.
Oh, you see here? That should work for you, Michael.
Can anybody see that?
Yep.
Okay. So just the table of contents for this presentation. I'm going to go over the study assumptions. That's just things like inflation, growth rates. Uh, the revenue requirements are just the revenue required to be collected from customers. It's just a fancy term for the cost of the system. Uh, your fund balances, your operating capital fund balances, current charges and rates, so what customers currently pay now, and then our recommended charges and rates over the next five years. And then looking, of course, at some sample bills. Um, so we'd say a lot of customers don't really care what their rate is. They wonder what their bill's going to be. So we'll look at some, some sample bills and then a comparison to some surrounding communities, and then our recommendations. So some of the guiding principles and objectives of the study. So the water and sewer systems must each be financially self-supporting. So you really shouldn't be having one subsidize the other. You can certainly make, um, you know, transfers between them, but you want to make sure you pay those back at a reasonable amount of time. Uh, utilities should maintain reserves, provide for contingencies and unplanned expenses. That's things like an operating, like a rainy day fund, and then a capital reserve for any emergency repairs. Uh, water and sewer rates should be kept as low as possible over time. You'll see I have italicized over time there because you can defer maintenance and, you know, not, uh, invest in your system and have really low rates. But then at some point, you know, you're going to have a really large main break or something like that, and it's going to be a big issue. So the key is to keep rates low over time. Uh, so our objective is to ensure rates are stable through sound financial management, system maintenance, and we do that by reviewing the funds and looking at the long-term plan, uh, including your, your capital improvement plan. So some factors that affect charges and rates, um, for operating mains expenses is going to be, you know, your salaries, your benefits, materials, things like that. Uh, your largest expense from operating side is really the purchase of water from Toledo. You don't have a lot of control over that. It's simply a pass-through cost because you're buying your water from them. Uh, so, uh, the big factor there is whatever increases they're passing along, you know, you have to then incorporate into your rates. Uh, everything else, we're just using an inflationary factor of 3%. Um, that may be going up in the future. You're considering what inflation's right now, but, uh, but right now, we've chosen in the model to use 3%. Uh, capital improvement plans. So since you're buying your water from Toledo, you don't have to worry about water treatment, but you will have to work on, uh, in your CIP water distribution, what we call sewage collection, and then wastewater treatment. Uh, any debt service, so that's any existing payments you have right now. That's the principal and interest payments. And if you have any capital projects that are any deep debt-funded, you know, really large projects, uh, we will then calculate the debt for those and add that on to any existing debt. Uh, customer changes. So we look at your, you know, your recent history of, of changes in accounts, the past five years or so, and it's looked like you've been adding about 1% in growth of customers per year. However, we also look at your, your water usage, your water consumption it's referred to, and then your sewage generation. So essentially, you know, the water in is the sewage out. Um, and that, over the past four or five years, it's been roughly, uh, 0% growth there. So we're, we're seeing, and this is not, uh, unique to, to the city. All across the country, you may be adding customers, but we're seeing those customers using less on a per capita basis. But some places, we're actually seeing declining usage, uh, based on conservation, roof, floor fixtures, um, things of that nature. And then miscellaneous revenue changes is anything other than your minimum charges and rates. Uh, we're just being conservative here and saying there's no growth in that. And then those two cash balances I mentioned. Uh, for the operating one, we're looking at 90 days of operating expenses, so roughly 25% of your operating expenses, uh, kept in a rainy day fund. And then for capital, um, after discussion with staff, we're, we're looking to have these at about, uh, one-year average capital costs for each water and sewer. I think for water it's about, uh, $3 million, and then sewer it's about $2 million. So the revenue requirement, as I mentioned before, this is simply just the cost of the system. So it starts with your operating mains expenses, salaries, benefits, um, material supplies, things like that. And obviously, the big one there is the purchase of water from Toledo. Uh, any outstanding debt, so that's both, um, your current debt and then, uh, future debt based on any CIP projects you planted debt fund, and then your capital improvement projects. So you're going to be funding from rates. So we add all that up. We call that the annual revenue requirement. We then less out any miscellaneous revenues, and that's really how much you need to collect from the customers. Uh, this is a snapshot of your capital projects over the next, uh, five years. So you can see water there, uh, ranging from roughly, you know, $2 million in 2022 to, uh, about $1.5 in '26. Uh, sewer, you can see you're doing a little bit more on capital there, about 3.8, '22, going up to the almost $7 million in '24, and then 3.3 in '26. And then there's just some bulleted projects down there, just showing you some of your larger water and sewer projects. And then this is actually broken down by funding source. So you can see for water, uh, we're planning on funding all of the capital projects through rate revenue. Uh, and then sewer, we're using some rate revenue as well as a capital fund. So as I mentioned before, the target was to have one-year average worth of capital projects, uh, in each fund. And so right now, your capital fund for sewer is higher than that minimum. So we're actually using some of that fund to pay for some of these projects. That way, we're mitigating how much you need to collect from customers, and so we're actually keeping the rate increases, uh, lower for sewer. So here is just graphically what the revenue requirements look like, um, and then in comparison, how much revenue you're bringing in right now. So these blue bars, you see, uh, for the next, uh, five, six years, that's your operating expenses. And then the green is your cash-funded capital projects stacked on top of that. And then the orange there is actually a contribution to the capital fund for water. So water is not at, um, where we'd like it to be in that minimum. So we're actually making these, these half a million dollar contributions in years '22, '23, and '24, so then it gets to that average balance. Um, and then the blue line going across horizontally there, that's your current revenue. So anytime that line is lower than the bars, that means your revenue is less than your expenses. You can see you'd actually need to do an increase there. Uh, so the darker blue line that's kind of sloping, um, up into the right, that's our proposed revenue increases. So revenue, a recommended increases. And if you see that note at the bottom, uh, that blue line rec, represents an 8% increase in '22, an 8% increase in '23, and then 3% the next three years, uh, for water. Turning to sewer, again, we have the blue bars being your operating expenses. Uh, as sewer has some current debt service, that's the red, and then the green is the cash-funded capital projects. And you can see how the capital fund is, is not real straightforward. It's kind of lumpy when you do a capital improvement plan. You have some big projects in some years, smaller ones in others. Um, so by doing the, uh, the five-year, it can kind of smooth out those, those lumpy increases. Uh, on sewer, um, the fund's a little better off. You only need about a 2% uh, every year, the next five years, as opposed to where water needs a little bit of a higher increase. So turning to the operating fund balances, this is actual cash at hand. So this shows the, um, the balances based on the proposed revenue. So you can see for water, as you mentioned, we're, uh, we're kind of building this up over time till we get to that 90 days target by 2026. So that's where the, the blue being your current balance, like, meeting or exceeding that, that target red line. And then for sewer, as you mentioned, you've got, um, you've got more than you currently need to fulfill that balance. So we're actually using some of that to pay down the capital. Same thing on the capital fund balances. Uh, as I mentioned, with water, we're adding those $500,000 contributions in '22, '23, '24, until we meet that, um, that target amount. And then sewer, since we've already met that target amount, we're actually using some of these funds to pay for your capital projects. Um, so that way, you don't have to raise the increases to do it. Uh, this is similar to those charts. This is more just in a, you know, tabular format, I suppose. So looking at the starting operating balance for each year, then adding in any rate revenue, adding any miscellaneous revenue, lessing out the operating expenses, and then since, uh, most of the revenues are just showing up in operating, we then make a transfer of the capital balance, pay for the capital projects. So then down the bottom, this is the capital fund starting balance. Um, for water, we have those contributions to the fund in '22, '23, '24. Uh, we don't have any debt service, and then lessing out the capital projects, and again, with our contribution, and then the transfer from the operating funds. You can see the, the starting balances and the ending balances. This should match the, the graphs in the former slides. Same thing for sewer, starting with the operating balance, showing the ending balance. Um, same thing on capital, so that we end up with those, um, those minimum balances by the end of the fifth year. So your current charges and rates, uh, the water table at the top, you have a monthly minimum charge, which includes 300 cubic feet allowance. Uh, you have inside-city and outside-city customers. So for inside-city customer, for water, you pay $20.26 per month. Uh, with that, you get 300 cubic feet. Um, and then if you go beyond the 300 cubic feet, you then pay per thousand cubic feet. And you can see the rates there. So 67.53 for inside-city, 77.66 for outside. Uh, sewer, a little, there's a little more complicated. You have some customers who have one meter, some customers have two meters, and then you have some customers who, um, don't receive treatment from the city. Um, I think Northwest is where they receive treatment from. They pay separately. Uh, but again, you have a monthly minimum charge, includes 300, and you have a volumetric rate. If you go over that 300, a thousand cubic feet. So simply taking those current rates, uh, increasing those by the, uh, projected revenue increases we showed before, uh, this is what the rates would be over the next five years, for each water and sewer. As I mentioned before, you know, a lot of customers don't, aren't really interested in what the, the rates are. They want to know what their bill is. So this is a comparison of some customer bills. So we have, for residential, we have a small user, a median user, and then a large user. So if we focus on that median user, that second line, um, you know, that's somebody, uh, uses 500 cubic feet. Uh, so roughly half your customers use less than 500, half use more than 500, uh, the residential customers. So a customer bill right now for somebody who's a median user pays $67.85. Uh, that would go up to 71.23, or roughly a 5, 5% increase, or a $3.38 increase per month. Um, and then the next year, it would go up about $3.60, another 5%. And then after that, about 2.5% each year. So $1.9, $1.94, and then $2. And that's per month. Taking that median usage and then seeing what that bill would be if you, uh, paid a water and sewer bill in a different community and comparing that to Perrysburg. Um, you can see the blue here is a water bill, the green is a sewer bill, and the total is to the right of the, the bars. Um, you can see Perrysburg currently is about in the middle of the pack, pack, and then it'd be, you know, just slightly higher than that, uh, next year. Um, what this does not account for is any of these other communities if they're planning on doing a rate increase. You know, that would not be shown. This only reflects in current rates that we were able to, um, obtain from those communities. So our recommendations to adopt the recommended charges and rates for the planning period for the next five years. Um, but at the same time, you know, you can set those rates, but if you have to revisit them, you know, we recommend going, looking at the financial model, uh, putting in your actual numbers over the projected numbers to see kind of where you fall. If the rate projections, you know, of the next five years are, are still adequate, then that's great, enough to touch them. But otherwise, you can come and revisit it. So with that, I'll take any questions?
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Why, why is Monroe so much less than Perrysburg? I think I cited about 40 something?
This is Monroe County insight. Yeah. So there's many reasons why it's tough to do an apples-to-apples, right? Um, topography, environment, you know, governance, it could be maybe some general fund subsidies. I don't know exactly what's going on in Monroe County. Um, economies of scale, if they're larger, then maybe you'll, some economies of scale there. Um, I don't know if they're buying water from Toledo. So, yeah, it's tough to, um, if anybody on staff has more insight in terms of what's going on in Monroe County, and they may be able to help. But, yeah, you have to, um, you have to take into consideration. There's a lot of apples and oranges comparisons. While it calculates the bill of what it would be if you, if somebody else lived there and they use that much usage, there's all sorts of different differentiating we can do.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
No.
I was at the...
I think we asked a lot of questions at the Public Utilities Committee meeting, so I...
Yeah.
All mine got answered.
All right. Thank you very much.
There's a lot to take in. If you have questions further on, feel free to, to reach out to Dallas.
Thank you very much.
So that will be the end of the president of council report. Thank you, Mr. Maker, for, uh, filling up and, uh, speaking.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Go ahead. Any reports? Finance and economic development.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance and Economic Development Committee met on November 9th. Meeting was called to order 5:30 PM by Chairperson Mark Weber. Committee members present were Deborah Bourne and myself. Kim McCarthy was not present. Also present were Bridget Cabot, City Administrator, Amber Rathburn, Finance Director, and Kayla Trego, Deputy Finance Director. Uh, there being no objections, the minutes of the October 12th meeting were approved. On the appointment of Mary Richter, which we had that, um, finalized tonight, uh, went, went very well. We just, we have a few questions and, um, acknowledge that she, uh, Ms. Richter was part of the Country Garden Club, which has done a lot of, a lot of good for the community. And, uh, Ms. Bourne stated that she had known Ms. Ri, Ms. Richter for years and thinks that she'll be an outstanding member of the board. We'd agreed 2-0 to recommend Ms. Richter to the Appointment Review Committee. Resolutions , uh, for the use of the internet auction and sale of surplus property. Ms. Rathburn explained that the Ohio Revised Code requires the city to pass legislation annually authorizing us to sell surplus items on the internet. The resolution for 2021 is being requested as an emergency measure, but the second resolution is not an emergency measure because it is for the calendar year of 2022. Ms. Bourne asked for clarification on the meaning of municipality-owned personal property, and Ms. Rathburn explained that anything of value over $1,000 that the city would sell, um, first would come before the committee. So the committee agreed 2-0 to pass these resolutions on to council. Amending the food truck ordinance to accept the applications, Ms. Rathburn explained that they currently accept applications after March 1st and are asking to move that to January 1st of every year. The fees will be staying the same, and, as the administration is not proposing any changes at this time. Ms. Bourne asked when the date normally was, and Ms. Cabot explained that it was normally March 1st, and that the permit was only good until the end of the year. Uh, the committee agreed 2-0 to pass this amended ordinance to council. This is, uh, it's going to work out well for any winter, winter fest events that we may have, if there's, want to be any food trucks. Uh, discussion of the 2022 budget. Ms. Bourne asked about the Third Street sanitary sewer replacement and if the amount was still accurate. Ms. Cabot said that, yes, it is the number in the utilities budget. Ms. Bourne also asked about the erosion control around Three Meadows Pond, and Ms. Cabot stated that they're requesting to do the, the, the remaining two-thirds around the pond, and that we can take a look at, uh, doing a pathway around, once the erosion control part is completed. Ms. Bourne added that there has been a lot of talk during PRAK about having a natural walking path around the pond. walking path around the pond. I asked about handicap parking down by Riverside Park, and if there'll be any money in the budget for that. Ms. Cabot answered that there is not anything in the initial budget, but once we get the numbers back, it is something that could be proposed in the amended budget. Ms. Bourne asked about the retaining wall that was mentioned in that project, and where it would be located. Ms. Cabot explained that it would be on Water Street, because in order to add parking spaces, there would first have to be a retaining wall on the south side of Water Street, and that they are still, we're still in the information gathering phase in that project. Ms. Cabot also added that they have been working with Rotary Foundation and have numbers for eight pickleball courts out at Rotary Park. The plan is for the foundation to raise the funds, turn the funds over to the city, and have the city bid for and manage the project. This should be cost neutral to the city, and Ms. Rathburn stated that the budget went down $88,000 due to an error typo in the pool budget. That was also addressed at the Rec Committee in their budget talks. Finance Director's Report. I asked if the legal fees that were, were for the wage rate study, it was the same law firm that we used, and Ms. Cabot stated that those fees were actually for the IAFF arbitrations. I asked about Turner Concrete, the sidewalk connection of 203 West Front Street, and Ms. Cabot said that they are working towards Front Street having a continuous sidewalk, and only have one more house to go. I also asked for an explanation on a business card that was in our, in expenses over $5,000, and Ms. Rathburn explained that that is listed as business card, but it's really the city Bank of America credit card, or BOA. Ms. Bourne asked about Louisiana sanitary sewer investigation, and what that is about. Ms. Cabot stated she believes a suspected leak in the storm sewer on Louisiana Avenue. Ms. Bourne also asked about Param Electric, and when it will be completed, and she's referring to the Elmen-Louisiana intersection. Ms. Cabot explained that they are still waiting for traffic signal controllers due to the supply chain issue. Ms. Rathburn stated that for health insurance funding, we are remaining steady, around $200,000 for our fund balance, and that there are still a couple of big claims out there that we are expecting. Another business, I asked about the income tax not being on the agenda, and which Ms. Cabot reminded me that they explained that we'll be doing these on the live quarterly updates, but we still get, we'll still get monthly reports. And I asked if we were still waiting on guidelines for the CARES Act money, and Ms. Cabot said that she would like to meet with Jonathan Smith, President of City Council, and that they have received the first half of the allocation. And I asked how much we received. Ms. Rathburn explained that we received 1.1 million for the first half, for a total of 2.2 million we'll be getting. The second half of the money, the city will receive it approximately one year from now. Ms. Bourne stated that she would like to see police and fire receive some of that money, and Ms. Cabot said that she will make a note of that. There being no further business, the meeting adjourned at 5:52. I will be introducing four pieces of legislation tonight individually, beginning with the second reading of the ordinance for the 2022 budget. So I would like to introduce Ordinance 54, 2021, and move that the rules basis suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only.
Roll call.
Ms. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance 54, 2021.
You are the only participant in the conference. Please press any key on your keypad to remain in the conference.
And other expenditures to the City of Perrysburg, Wood County, Ohio. Press 1, connect press. 2022, and declaring an emergency.
I know it's a reading, if you don't mind, I just would like to make one quick comment that, you know, with the new implementation that we have with the security out front, I think that's something we could have a comment with the feedback. One of the questions I wanted to ask is what the cost is for that additional security out there so far from what I asked Ms. Cabot. She reached out and said since July, that cost has been about $30,000 for the security for the last four months, so if we, should I put like that, I'm looking at it about $90,000 to $100,000 a year for the security out front there. I know that there's some conversations regarding restructuring the administration building at some point, but honestly, the cost seems to be pretty high, and I don't know if there's something that we can do on that, and I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention on.
I think I brought that up to Safety Committee. I was asking Chief Jones, you know, how he went about staffing that, said that usually they, he hasn't really added staff, if I'm correctly saying that, that he uses, kind of rotates some of their officers in and out.
Currently during the day, they are rotating officers off patrol, in for a couple hours stint, and then they're back out of patrol. In the evenings, they're trying to utilize second shift officers as well, but that doesn't always work out because that happens to be kind of like the busiest time is second shift. So there's times then when we bring somebody in on overtime to work those hours while there's council or committee meetings, or commission meetings that are taking place in the building. If the budget is approved as is, there's three additional police officers proposed in that budget. One of those will be assigned to first shift. Two of them will probably end up on second shift, because again, that is our busiest shift, and then the goal would be to rotate those out throughout the shift during the time period where there's staffing needs in the atrium for council, committee, commission meetings. That would be the goal.
So I know that I received at least one complaint from one committee where there was no one there until about five minutes before the committee started, and individuals were sitting out there. So I guess the question, if we're doing overtime for the second shift and it's a busier shift, is this a conversation that we should be having about having the security open, or having the building open during council or committee meetings versus having security out there? We saw some issues that we've had as well, which I'm sure that we're still working with the first land use plan discussion, with trying to get people through the door. And that's something that I don't want our citizens to feel that they are, I'm not saying that they wouldn't feel welcome, but to make it difficult for them to come to an open meeting, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I guess I would say we're very aware of that concern. As you recall, there was security, we were one of the last buildings in, they back up. Every building that is a public building in Wood County has some security. Ours was the one that has people coming in on a regular basis. All the county buildings, the courthouses, there is some expectation of being able to conduct the business of the community in a safe way. As you also recall, it was kind of, we didn't have it, because of the nature of the building, and then we had some instances where staff was at risk. So I recognize that that is an additional cost, but there is a safety and security issue for staff, I think has to be, may, it has to be, we have to be aware of and make sure that staff feels comfortable being able to come to work and work in a safe environment. We have people who, with no security, were readily exposed to people who just walked in the door. So we're willing to, I'm more than happy to think about different ways to do that, and to see what security measures are or aren't. I do think also, unfortunately, the first event with land use, that was just, kind of just over capacity. I mean, I think that that can be addressed now that we know. We also had too many people in the room, had some other things that happened, so we have to take care of that. But fortunately also, given today's climate, it seems a little bit naive to say that we shouldn't have security for people coming into the building.
To clarify, my, really what I concern I am more focused on is more in the evening.
Yeah.
If we have overtime that's coming in the evening, maybe I, for me on council, I'm not as concerned as who the staff, during the day, when they have so many different people coming in. But I do have a concern when, you know, we've had the backup, yes, there was a capacity issue, and I know that Councilman Coleman has brought up about having cameras in here in some ways to connect the public in the past, and we wouldn't have to go through those capacity issues either. Yeah, we could at least find some ways to set up an atrium, but maybe, it's been a while since I've been to other community council meetings, or other community government meetings, but I don't recall having to go through security to enter into.
Mommy, Bowling Green, Savannah, Waterville, all have.
But it's slightly different, I would say, in the fact that those buildings don't have police departments directly connected to the building, do they?
Mommy.
Like, I mean, I feel like our entrance is completely different than those.
But we're going to look, I'm more than happy to look at ways to make it, I mean, it's not a most efficient exit point anyway, and we're trying to look at, you know, what needs to be done to this building, so.
Yeah, it's just one of those things, if we're spending, and it's not a critique at all, I get the security thing, and I want our staff to feel safe while they're here, but it's a, it's a bad look when we're paying a police officer out there for night meetings for a group of 20 people, and we have a problem in Municipal Park that people are coming and complaining about, so it's just one of the.
They're not, they're not mutually exclusive. They are not mutually exclusive, and I think we would also, you know, a security issue at Municipal Park is certainly something we need to address, but there's also a security issue here, I mean, so I'm more than happy to talk about it with the chief and the administration. We want people to have, I feel like they can, it should be open to the public, they should have a right to come be able to be heard, but we do also have to make sure that it's a safe environment as well.
I would, I would add to some comments that Jonathan had. I've heard the same from a lot of individuals who have said to me that it makes a deterrent for them not wanting to come into the city building, when they feel this is owned by the taxpayers, they should be able to come in and attend the meetings. I've had people tell me that they cannot get in because either someone's not here, or no one notified the police department that there was a meeting. I've heard a lot of those comments as well.
I wish you would, as I've said multiple times, I wish you would share those comments and.
I just did.
Well, let me finish. Individuals, so that we can talk to them and see exactly what meeting they were trying to come to, when they were here, and what happened, because we don't want that, we don't, we don't need that view of people. So if you're, if you can get that information to me, we'd be happy to follow.
You know, once upon a time, we won't even be talking about this, but if you look at the Homeland Security recommendations and federal guidelines and stuff from schools none up aligned, we're meeting the minimum qualms by doing this, which also, if you think about it from the other side, protects us from certain liabilities.
But we're more than happy to keep that discussion going.
I think really the biggest thing to focus on is what we can do with some of that cost if we're doing overtime. I appreciate hearing that we're having three new officers, but it's just something that I really want us to focus on. If we're going to be looking at restructuring building, move on a little more quickly than our restructuring entrance, or whatever it is we're going to do. I know it's, trying to move, have government move quickly is not necessarily the great way to say things, but anything we can do to try to help and save some of the dollars on that too, we'd be appreciative. That's all I really wanted to mention, and I'm sure we'll probably have much more.
I didn't know, I didn't realize we could put a price on human lives.
I don't think I put in any price on human life, but there's some ways we can be more efficient, and that's not something government's usually pretty good at.
Any other discussion on the budget before I move on? Okay. All righty, I would like to introduce, oh, I'm sorry.
So we're passing it next time.
Yes.
So again, and I've said this to council since we've been in administration, if you have any questions or concerns, please get them to us ahead of time, so we can make sure that they're addressed at the meeting, so that I think that would make the passage, which we hope council will consider, but also any issues or concerns can be background information.
Okay. It'll be voted on first, the first meeting in December. Okay? All right. I would like to introduce Ordinance 57, 2021, and move that the rules basis suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, and to dispense with the second and third readings.
A roll call.
Ms. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni? Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance 57, 2021, amending petified ordinance, 8/23/2023, to be petified ordinance, petified by ordinance 52, 2020, and passed on August 1st, 2017.
I move that Ordinance 57, 2021 be passed.
I have discussion.
Second, discussion.
I had noticed, first of all, I would like to say I voted for this in the Finance Committee because I wanted this to go to City Council. Secondly, I would like to say that I'm not voting for this because I have seen no reason to see food trucks in the wintertime, particularly in January, when we have the most snow, the most ice, so I think March through December is certainly significant enough. Thank you.
Do have a quick question on relay to know what the food truck ordinance here is. I know we've had some complaints from some residents regarding some of the food truck Has those been resolved at this point, or where are we at on, at the administration?
I think we actually, Mr. Weber answered our question, but thanks to Mr. Weber, we actually, he resolved that issue for us.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you, Councilman Weber.
Sure.
You and I met.
Pardon me? Oh, Local Roots, oh, yeah, the Local Roots one? Oh, yeah, yeah, that we took care of that.
I just know that we need to address.
Yes, yes.
It was actually a simple fix.
That was a simple, you know, we went there and we listened to that generator from all different angles, and talked with the owner, they were very cooperative, and agreed to build a little plywood shelter to stop that, and I talked with the homeowners that were affected by it, and they seemed satisfied at the time, and we're more of a, that takes care of that food truck, let's see what happens with the next food truck that comes, and we'll just have to deal with it if another food truck comes that's not complying. But for now, he is, he's moved it a couple times, I've gone there several times when he's been there, he's moved it a couple times, he's trying to help out as much as possible. And homeowners seem satisfied now, and he's probably done for the year, I'm sure. Okay? That's the only one you were talking about? Nothing out on Louisiana Avenue?
No, that was just the one that we received a few complaints on, so I just wanted to follow up on that.
Okay.
Actually, actually, I would like to add that the homeowners have also chatted a lot with me about it as well, and said they do not want to have any more food trucks coming by there because they work from home, and it's a hindrance on their working ability, and one individual has health issues, so that was brought to my attention.
Yes, but I had the same conversations with them, and they understand that they're allowed to be there, that we can't tell them they can't come. They understand the ordinance, so we're just trying to come to some common ground and see that, just be a little more courteous to the neighbors, and that's, that's worked out quite well. All right.
Any other discussion? That roll call.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Bourne?
No. I would like to introduce Resolution 63-2021, and move that the rules basis suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Roll call.
Ms. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Okay. Last one, I would like to introduce Resolution 64, 2021, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second? Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
The next Finance and Economic Development Committee is scheduled for Tuesday, December
use in which it was acquired during the calendar year 2022 by internet auction.
I move that Resolution 64-2021 be passed.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
The next Finance and Economic Development Committee is scheduled for Tuesday, December 14th, at 5:30 PM. Can I end my report?
Thank you.
City committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we do not have a report, our next meeting is scheduled for November, November 23rd, Tuesday at 6:00 PM if necessary.
Thank you, Recreation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the meeting was called to order, this was on November 9th, at 6:29 PM by Chairperson Deborah Bourne, committee members present were Deborah Bourne, Jean Matroni, Jonathan Smith, teleconferencing, also present was Amber Rathburn, Director of Finance. Under approval of Administration Report for October 12th, 2021 meeting, Ms. Bourne stated that she had not received the Administration Report, if they submit a report later, it can be received at the rate of the meeting, adidum, Administration Report was submitted after the meeting, we're still going to be in the next regular meeting. Under old business, there was no old business discussed except the closed ice hockey arena, Mr. Smith mentioned that the ice hockey arena which he said, which he said that Slovenia Levy had failed, and that the change caused delays. Ms. Bourne asked about the potential location on US 25, Mr. Smith responded that there are, there was no need to do a study with the situation at Tam O'Shanter until, until the situation at Tam O'Shanter is resolved. Ms. Bourne then asked if he is raising money privately, Mr. Smith responded that he was looking for a public-private partnership, Ms. Matroni stated that she was leaning toward not supporting this project and wanted more information, Ms. Bourne agreed. PrAC reporter, Ms. Bourne said that the PrAC committee met on Monday, November 1st, they will not meet again until April 2022, they had lengthy discussion about several topics, among them the goal of being good stewards for the environment, there were concerns that the committee's motions are not being considered by city council, one of them is opposition to paving Orleans parking lot, others are the creation of a natural walking path around Three Meadows Pond, a possible passive park in the Hawthorne Development, a heater for the pool, and eliminating the lights at Woodland Park around the sculptures since these cause light pollution, Ms. Bourne suggested that the lights be toned down around the statues, they're also, they were also concerned about communication with the administration, Administrator Cabot is planning to meet with some members of PrAC to discuss this. Under new business, Finance Director Amber Rathburn was present to answer questions about budget items affecting recreation, she reviewed all budget items in the category, in this category, Chairwoman Bourne asked if a heater for the pool could be included in the budget, Ms. Rathburn said that she would check on it, when Ms. Rathburn mentioned a 5% increase in salary for pool employees, Ms. Bourne stated that she thought the maximum permitted increase was 3%, Ms. Rathburn said that she would look this up, Ms. Matroni asked what was the reasoning for wanting a pool heater, Ms. Bourne mentioned that the PrAC members think that the water is too cold, Mr. Smith stated that he agreed with Chairwoman Bourne about the 3% maximum mid-wage increase, Chairwoman Bourne asked what parks are going to have cameras installed, Ms. Rathburn stated that she thought River Crest was one, but would check on the other, see the attached document for further information. Under good of the order, Ms. Matroni congratulated Perrysburg High School cross-country, girls' cross-country team for winning the state championship, Ms. Bourne and Mr. Smith agreed, Ms. Bourne added that when she attended Perrysburg High School, the girls' volleyball team also won the state championship. Next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, at 6:30 PM, prepared by Deborah Bourne, Chair, November 16th, 2021, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Just one bit of discussion on that, about the lights at Woodland Park, I met with Robin Ballmer Saturday night, we went out there to install the solar lights that she purchased, she had purchased for the, there's five sculptures that are not on the regular pads that have the, the regular electric lights, so we installed the solar ones on those, and looked over all the other ones, and yes, those, each, each pad has four lights shining up, the ones are along the entrance drive, work out real well, they're shining all on the sculptures, there's five of them along East Boundary, that Robin and I both agreed that the two, the two that are on the side of the street facing right at the sculptures are great, the two behind that are shining towards the street are really more a problem because they're shining into the eyes of definitely walkers and maybe drivers, and there really is no need to light the backside of those five sculptures because behind them is just trees and a little mound, see what I mean, so, yeah, so it's just, if it's possible, just to disconnect the two back ones, or tone those down in some sort, I don't know if there's different levels of light on those LEDs, I know on the solar ones we had two different levels of light.
I don't believe it is, I'll say-
I didn't see, I was looking, I didn't see any adjustment on them.
Robin has insisted on all those corners being lit.
Oh, yes, yes, and, I know, and we, she acknowledged that, that she had, she assisted, and I guess she just, I think her comments were she wasn't, certainly they were going to be that bright, you know, the LED is not really a warm white, it's a, it's a really a cool, cool white, and even in fact, there's a couple of them that if they could just be pointed up a little bit, maybe they wouldn't be a distraction, but if you could have, have someone look at that, that, but overall, they all look really great, we took some photos, and I think one made the newspapers.
Thanks.
Ms. Cabot, to add to that, I think I asked someone about that, about the light usage, and I think they said something about there's a level four, does that sound right, that you can get with an LED light, that's not as bright?
A typical light, or a screen light is about 3,000 lumens, I'm not sure that the lumen is on the sides, or 4,000 lumens would be brighter.
But I'm saying there was, it was a four, I think it might have been the number four possibly, that was to the actual light.
I don't know whether what that would mean, if translated into a LED light.
Yeah, my understanding was that it's supposed to be less, not as bright.
We'll follow up, the council on our word. Okay, thanks for coming out there.
Yeah.
All right, Plan Zoning?
Thank you, I know we met on November 10th, you still have minutes yet, they came to me today, events of today didn't leave me any time to get a good look at them, so you will receive a final copy once they're ready, I'll kind of summarize this as best I can, the first item that I was the land use plan update, and Paul Velazos was present to resume, and he urged us to make a decision as to how we want to handle the Heights and Land Use Plan as quickly as we could, I believe in an earlier committee meeting, we told the group that we would put the issue of the Heights near the top of the list, trying to get a final plan of what to do with that, I commented that I, I guess I put a motion, although we never really formally voted on it, to remove the Heights as a focus area from the land use plan, I didn't think, and I don't think it's right to include a plan for them when they are not even part of a city, Mr. Coleman generally agreed, but he felt it would be wise to leave it into, instead of labeling it as a legacy community, and I agree with that comment as well, Mr. Van Huzen wanted, he was trying to get some clarity from Paul about whether the Heights wanted to be removed simply as a focus group, or just remove them from the Land Use Plan as a whole, and Barry's pointed out, if they were left in the plan, they would be labeled residential legacy, but he expressed the concern that more commercial properties will infringe on the Heights, as has been happening. Brody Walters put up a brave defense for keeping the Heights in as a focus area, he felt that doing so helped make it a stronger planning document for future councils, developers in accord if it ever came to that, he and Mark Easterling both talked about going back to the drawing board and spending time in that focus area, because taking the Heights out of the plan altogether does not achieve their goal, if the goal is to protect the neighborhood, part of that further review will be input on what their vision is for their own neighborhood, my thought was this, there's not a great level of trust out there right now between the Heights and the city, Paul Velazos did suggest to take the Heights out of the land use plan and maintain it as a legacy neighborhood, as has been true in prior plans, he did express though, that if there are additional protections, it could be a place to protect future development, he would love to sit down with Mr. Walters and talk with him about that, Mr. Walters stated that we need to plan while preserving, Lea de Leo was present, she directed the Heights, and she picked up on a comment Corey Coleman indeed, earlier to the effect that, you know, the township should be brought into this discussion, and she said, she agreed with that concept, she said she wanted to be a transparent voice of the Heights, she volunteered herself, and I think we appointed her that night, she said they wanted to preserve the neighborhood as it's a good opportunity for Perrysburg to be progressive and provide lower income homes, they did not want to be part of the city plan, but they do want to come up with something to protect, as Brody Walters had mentioned earlier, kind of as the meeting wore down, we're putting Mark, or more than full time, he's getting overtime paid pretty soon, he, he had a meeting set up already with the Township Trustee, and Lea was attending.
Yes, very well.
And Brody was invited, so, I mean, we got kind of an informal discussion going on, I think that night we talked about it might take, despite Paul's desire to get this settled sooner rather than later, it might take us a few months to work through this, and, but I think everyone agreed with the proposition, we should rush this through just to get an answer as opposed to doing the right thing. George Thomas was present, he works for the Fair Housing Center, which serves Lucas and Wood counties, they had three principal suggestions, one is to consider more multifamily housing throughout the land use plan, including more affordable housing, the second is the need for more public transportation, connecting other public transit in the metro area, and third is considering access for people's disabilities, and I think Brody pointed out at that time that this is just the land use component of global alternate, it would be a comprehensive plan which has a lot of text that gets into some of those areas, you kind of begin with the piece with the land use plan and move on from there, Teresa Akox who lives on Fifth, he's Fifth Street, wanted, or asked about a moratorium, if Heights residents wanted to sell their property, and they contacted the city for annexation, in effect put a moratorium on any of those transactions until we have a specific, separate and specific plan for the Heights, I responded that we try to respect the right of the property person who wishes to sell the property, and generally speaking, the government should not take that right away from them. On another issue, Todd France who's on PrAC but said he, he made it clear he wasn't representing PrAC, he did say they voted unanimously on the property between King Woods and Brook Agent to turn to the development and into a city park, council, some of the council were recalled, we kind of had a very preliminary conceptual plan for that that Brody had worked up, and so I did respond to him that I think council has previously identified that in the area where we need to have a city park, and that's something we'll be working toward. He also talked about non-motorized paths, and I think finally Brody pointed out that the city's goal for a number of years now has been to collect money and put it in our parks development fund to create larger, more versatile parks, rather than having a bunch of pocket parks they have to run around and mow, and that don't really serve much purpose. Committee can't stop talking about fences, walls, and hedges, and screen plannings, Brody Walters reviewed the document with the committee, the chart now, he believes and agrees with Kate, I believe our law director, that the chart is organizationally correct, and our homework assignment for the next committee meetings to look over and come back and see if we're ready to adapt. Next, we talked about, I didn't know what a KONEX box was, but for, if others don't know either, I guess it's these storage things, they're like a train carts, or whatever you call it, a car of a train, and people can put them primarily on commercial projects and use them for storage, I think that night we heard, we've got a list of about 82 or 83 of these things around town, and in many of those cases, they violate various provisions of our zoning code, basically, KONEX boxes, we allow on a temporary basis when a construction project is underway, but they shouldn't be a permanent structure. Matt Temby came to talk, he owns Vault Health and Fitness, the gym on East Second Street, the old post office, he pointed out that in the office and service zoning category, those facilities are limited to 5,000 square feet, whereas, he said, there are many in the modern development of gyms, there is a niche for those facilities that were around just shy of 10,000 or 12,000 square feet, that they wouldn't be permitted in office and service, he asked that that be considered, that change to 5,000 to 12,000, and we agreed to refer that to the Planning Commission. Greg Beatty was present, and he talked about many situations with fences of being built right at the sidewalk, he suggests that people should not be allowed to build their fence within three feet of the sidewalk, and this is another potential code change, Brody and Mark are going to put their heads together on what could be done about that matter. Finally, common, Mr. Bernard Bear, who's a resident who lives on Pine Street, who has a business on Gergen Drive, which apparently is the place where a lot of these KONEX boxes are located, and we had a, quite an extended discussion about his property, and, you know, was an accident in the city and issues like that, but there wasn't really any action for the committee to take, other than to hear a live example of what's going on with these KONEX boxes and the issues. We adjourn that evening, we meet again on Wednesday, December 8th, at 5:30 PM.
Thank you, any questions?
Okay, I have no report tonight or legislation, I see my next meeting is scheduled for the 23rd, I don't know if I sent out an email on that to other personnel, I would like to reschedule that.
Oh, something early, did you, did you send us something in early December?
I think I probably. Anyway, either way-
I think I said anything was on by that email chain, or-
Yeah, go ahead, I'm good with anything. But I would go ahead and feel comfortable taking that off the calendar for the November 23rd date.
If you have something, you can upload this email.
All right, perfect.
Are you going to circulate something on a new date?
Yeah, I will, I was looking, I saw the next Tuesday, it's 3/30th, that would probably be the day I shoot for, but I'll circle back for that email, I thought I had sent out-
You can shoot something, I'll appreciate it.
Okay, nothing further than that.
Thank you. Vote utility.
There, I have no report, our next good meeting is on November 29th at 6:30 PM, which is a Monday and a change from the normal date.
Thank you.
No report, my next meeting is November 29th at 5:30 PM.
Any other business come for council?
I would just like to, just make a quick comment, more of taking the council hat off and putting the citizen hat on at this point, and really wanted to give a thank you to the fire department staff, specifically Jared, Mike, and John, who came to our house November 7th at 12:30 AM, it was probably one of the worst nights of our, our life, but I wanted to-